Hello, everybody, and welcome to our Committee of the Whole Meeting for February sixth, twenty twenty four. Quite a few people in the gallery, both in person and on Zoom today, which is great. Mayor Urban is on vacation, so I'll be chairing on his behalf. He is joining us by Zoom tonight, however, as well as Counselor Burdas and Counselor Paquette that are also joining us by Zoom. We have one amendment to, sorry, did you want me to go through the gallery?
Yes, we should, for the gallery, your worship, for the record, we should list who's in the gallery, being we have so many people on Zoom and who's on Zoom.
Sure, so. You just want me to do the ones on Zoom?
Actually, we'll do who's in the gallery and on Zoom, please.
Okay, so we'll just list off who's in the gallery for the record, both in person and on Zoom. So I'll start with the Zoom call. Blues, who we believe is Carlson's, correct me if I'm wrong. Button, Malters, Colleen Craft, Mayor Urban, Counselor Burdas, Counselor Paquette, Ted Lake King, and Patty McLeod. And then in person, we have Jordan Stackhouse, Billy Wimp, Devin Broadhagen, Kyle O'Brien, Constable Kyle O'Brien, Denitia, Kayla, and Lois. Thank you. It's good, it's like. Okay, so we do have one amendment to the agenda, and that's just that we're going to move to our CMP delegation, which was item number six, we're going to move that up to number three, just so that he doesn't have to sit through the entire.
Go coaching hockey.
Meeting and go coach hockey. Okay, great, so if I can, I'm gonna motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented, amended, sorry.
Thank you, and second.
I'll, I'll second.
Thank you. Okay, and a motion to adopt the draft minutes from the regular meeting of January sixteenth, twenty twenty four.
Making motion to adopt those minutes of January sixteen, twenty twenty four.
Counselor Slager, second.
I'll second.
Mayor Urban, thank you. Okay, so RCMP, we have Constable Kyle O'Brien with us tonight, he's, do you wanna? You can actually sit in one of the chairs here, that way they'll get you on the, on the mic, yeah. So Constable O'Brien is one of our new members to the Watson Lake RCMP detachment, welcome. My name's Lauren Hanchar, I am usually sit there, I'm the councillor and deputy mayor for the town, says Counselor Thomas Slager. So, thanks for coming, we like to have the new members come in and just, if you can just introduce yourself and tell us a little bit.
Yeah, so my name's Kyle, I got a wife, two little ones at home, moved down here in September from Ross River. I was there for about a year, and then before that, I was in Southern Alberta, just outside of Lethbridge. Coming up on five years' service. Be here for a few.
Awesome, well, thank you so much for coming, and thank you for coaching hockey.
No problem.
We appreciate that, and yeah, if there's anything that we can do to help you get settled in, I think you've been here for a little while. Yeah, okay, so if there's anything we can do, let us know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Cold Hill.
Just, that's.
I know, I forgot, yeah, that's awesome. Great, thank you so much, nice to meet you. All right, so moving right along. Open payables, so can we please have a motion to pay the open payables in the amount of two hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two dollars and forty-three cents?
I'll make a motion to pay the open payables in two hun- for two hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two and forty-three cents.
Thank you, Mayor Urban, second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Denis, or Counselor Paquette. Okay, any comments?
I did notice a few canceled items on the payables, can I get some clarification on them?
Yes, for the record, your worship, there was some miscalculations with the Northwest Telville, so that's hence the calculations, and there's a couple others because the printer actually ate a couple checks, so they had to be reissued.
Okay, thank you, and Counselor Burdas has a question. Just six, one, eight, nine, six.
Six, eight, six, one, eight, nine, six? That's White Horse Motors, that's the purchase of the truck on the capital budget, that was approved in the twenty twenty-three capital budget, it finally arrived.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Six, one, eight, eight, zero?
Six, one, eight, eight, zero? That is a CCAN that was approved in the capital budget.
And then I had a question about six, one, eight, eight, one, was there a function that was going on?
So that's the, that's the Christmas dinners, all the food for the Christmas dinners.
Was, were there two or just?
Two, because there was stuff parties on.
Oh, okay.
Um, I have two, not that they're particularly large amounts, but I just, curious. Six, one, eight, seven, nine?
Six, one, eight, seven, nine, sorry, I'm gonna change. That, Robert Sager, he's the consultant that does our remote data collection, so that's the Sujukun flow equipment, he comes down once a year, services equipment and does our data logging force.
Okay, thank you, and then my other one was six, one, eight, eight, eight.
JR Carpentry, and that is work at that is water tank, the new water tank installations at the Ski Hill.
Okay, thank you.
Jesse Reams Carpentry.
Okay, thanks, that's all from me, does anyone else have any further questions? Okay, so all in favor?
Yes.
Okay, passed. Okay, so we have two public hearings tonight. What, the first one will be for the zoning amendment by law twenty twenty-four dash zero three, which is kilometer one thousand twenty-three point five on the Alaska Highway.
Just for the record, because I know there's been lots of questions floating around town, the kilometer ten twenty-three point five, if anybody clicks in, it's not in town limits, since that is the legal description of the property, and that's from the old Alaska Highway measurements, so that property is probably a kilometer nine eighty inside the town limits. It's like my property's a kilometer nine seventy-eight, but on my title, it says I'm a kilo- a kilometer a thousand and six Alaska Highway, so we have to advertise it by the legal description, and that's what that is.
Okay, thank you. And just in case nobody knows, we received a request to rezone that property from ALX Exploration to rezone that property from rural residential to industrial M two, and so we've received approval or the go-ahead from the minister to proceed with the OCP amendment, so that's completed, and now we're moving ahead with the zoning amendment, which is what this is. So, we need a, and we have, sorry, Ted Lake King from ALX on Zoom to answer any questions that might come up in the public hearing, so we need a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to open the pub- oh, open the public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor Urban, second, Counselor Slager, thanks, okay.
Your worship, there was no written submissions received within the time period, however, there was one written submission that came after closing. So hence, it's not in your package, because requirements state that it must be received by Thursday before the hearing, and this one came in Friday af- Friday afternoon, I will leave it to council to discuss if they want. Wanted addressed or not. In the past, anything that came in after submission isn't considered.
Okay.
I think that we should abide by the, the rules and stick to the guidelines that is our deadline for receiving information prior, prior to the meetings.
I agree.
I agree as well.
Okay.
So based on that, your worship, there was no submissions received for or against the zoning amendments.
Okay, thank you, so I guess we'll open it up to the gallery. If anyone has anything they want to add.
Yeah, and your worship, for the record, it's the former Hardy property.
Thank you.
Colleen Craft, your worship, that is.
Sure, so we have someone on Zoom with a comment. Colleen? Can you just unmute her, maybe?
I, I can only ask her to unmute, sorry. Colleen, you'll have to unmute yourself. Go ahead, Colleen.
Okay, well, we can't hear you if you're saying anything.
No, she's.
Oh, okay. Okay, thanks, so is there anyone else? Okay.
I'll make a motion to close the open hearing.
Thank you, Mayor Urban, second.
I can second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
Great. All right, so we will move on to our second hearing of the night, public hearing. And that is for a conditional use application we received from First Casca. Sorry.
Go ahead.
So it's for the, I honestly can't read this.
It's for one eighty Auburn Drive.
Thank you. Okay, and that is, they want to use that property for a gravel pit. For the Francis Avenue development, so sorry, can we get a motion to open the public hearing?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Counselor Slager, second.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Thank you.
Your worship, for the record, we received no written submissions prior to the public hearing.
Thank you. Anyone in the gallery have comments? Is a public hearing? Anyone on Zoom, anyone?
I would just ask if administration is clear as to what the material looks like in that location, is it suitable for that? Just coming from administration's standpoint, is there any concerns with it?
No, from administration's standpoint, there is no concerns, and actually Devon Broadhagen is in the room, your worship, and they have some test results from their test digging on site, and it is compliant with what's required.
And I understand the use for that will be for the expansion of Francis F.
Yes, for there and then as a gravel pit moving forward.
Sounds great, thank you.
Okay.
So, sorry, Devon, does that make sense what I said?
Yeah, I'm, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so if we have no further comments, I will ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Counselor Slager.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mayor Urban, all in favor?
Aye.
So, just for the record, it'll move to, it'll, council will make a decision at the next council meeting.
Should be February twentieth.
Be on the twenties. That's, unfortunately, that's the next scheduled meeting. Yeah, no, the committee of the whole meetings, there's no decisions are made at them, it's just the discussion meeting for like the public hearings and bylaws. So unfortunately, it's two weeks away.
Thank you, thank you for coming. Okay, so moving right along then, CAO report, CAO Lockwood.
Already.
Over to you.
Thank you, your worship. Yeah, so we're moving along, and starting tomorrow, we actually have Jordan Stackhouse in town to do supervisor training, which is exciting, we're moving on to the completion of reports, writing, and assessment writing, and stuff that we've been working towards for our supervisory staff, so it's excited to get that under the way, and we're just glad that the snow didn't keep droning today. And we're moving ahead with all the procurement stuff that I listed at the last meeting. We're working on the contract documents and, and scheduling of those, so, and I was away last week, so hence I don't have a very comprehensive report for you tonight. And as I spoke last meeting, for the next committee of the whole meeting, we'll be moving to written CAO report, and just waiting for this worship to be back for us to finalize the details on what's going to be encapsulated in that report, so. And I'm sure there'll be questions in open forum coming forward.
Okay, thank you. So next up, we have the twenty twenty-three quarter for departmental reports. If anybody, hopefully, everybody had a chance to look those over, and if there are any comments. I personally do not, I think, looks like everybody's really busy and doing well, the fire report was awesome.
My comment, my comment would be the progress in those reports, I think they've become very professional, they're very well-written, they're very to the point, and I really appreciate administration's effort from all departments on what those look like, it's clear. It's easy to read, and it's focused, so thank you.
Yes, and that's, your worship, that's part of the ongoing work with Jordan and our staff.
Thank you, does anyone have any comments regarding the departmental reports, department reports?
Just one, regarding fire. Nice report. There's only one, like, we're getting the new rescue or the pumper truck. I heard rumors, and this is why I'm asking us just to clarify, that we want to have like, we want to have governors at a hundred and ten kilometers an hour, however, if you like, are going to pass somebody on the way to, they're not pulling over, but you need to to have that extra jam in your engine, we shouldn't govern it out, it's a minor detail, but I think it's an important detail as well.
Well, yes, that detail is under discussion with us and the RCMP on, and the government over, and, sorry, highway compliance over those type of specs for emergency vehicles, so that is just the comment he put in there, what the exact governor amount will be determined yet. But it's going to be based on safety.
Gotcha. By the existing laws, as you may know, on Yukon, allow for.
Yeah, the Motor Vehicle Act is under review right now, so, and I guess the other part of it is, we can't have people driving a fully loaded fire truck at a hundred and ten or a hundred and fifteen on icy roads going to a call either, right, that doesn't. We can't get our own people there to save, you know, it's a liability.
I understand that, but if you are passing someone, you need that extra power.
Yeah, well, I get that, and the power, the power is there, it's just the governor, right, so, those, like I said, those things are still under discussion.
Gotcha, anyway, it's a concern, I'm passing on, doing my job.
Thank you, Counselor Slager, Counselor Paquette, any comments?
Nope, I agree with Mayor Urban about the reports, I think that they were done very well, and I agree, everybody's very busy, so, thank you.
Counselor Burdas, anything?
I'm just wondering why there's no rec one.
Yes, and that one is on my shoulders, somewhere there was a lapse in communication with the rec department, and Melanie was off until this morning, and I was advised I was going to have it before the meeting tonight, and I still haven't got it, so we've been having a couple staffing things going on there, so unfortunately, it didn't arrive, but it will be coming to you as soon as I get it in my inbox.
Thank you. Okay, so there's no nothing further on that, we'll move ahead to, to the Feeding of Wild Birds and Animals bylaw twenty-four dash zero two. Which is a new bylaw, as you all know. Did we receive any public input?
On the.
On the bylaw, yes.
Is it on the bottom, if you scroll?
No, I know, I saw the one, but I mean, actually relating to the bylaw. That was the only.
The one question that I had, I mean, I'm not here looking for other people's feedback probably right now, but the one question that I had is, is have we looked at this in the lens of conservation officer, were they involved with this making of the bylaw?
No, we did not go over to conservation for feedback, but as it with the rest of our bylaws, if council approves it, we'll go off to legal before it would come back for further readings, the same as the, you know, the general maintenance bylaw and all them, they will go off to legal to make sure that they're fit all the criteria to be actual enforceable bylaws.
Well, I mean, it wasn't, part of the reason why we needed to create this bylaw was because it was not covered anywhere else. That was the, the whole issue, that was my understanding, anyway.
Yes. That was from the letter to the, from the minister.
Okay, I mean, as far as the actual bylaw, I still don't have any issue with like the wording or the way it's laid out, I think it's effective, will be effective. Anyone else? Mayor Urban or Counselor Burdas?
Nothing from us.
No.
Counselor Slager?
I noticed the one where it was domestic birds being included with songbirds, that's all.
Yeah, and we've, we've fixed that.
I noticed that as well.
And that was under seven.
Oh, five B?
Five B, yeah.
Yeah, five B, and that's fixed, and thank you for that.
Okay. So I guess, what's the next step?
So the next step, it would co- come to council for a bylaw reading.
On the twentieth?
On the twentieth.
That'll be second? Second, we did first, we did first to make this public.
First, yeah, so it would be for second reading then, and then, or we can send it off to, if you're happy with it, before I came back for another reading, I would send it off to legal, and then you guys could do, take it from there.
How long does that usually take?
I honestly don't know, because I have other stuff that I've been waiting on for quite a while.
Okay, so maybe we should do that.
To make sure before you go through the next step.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll send it off to, I'll send it off to legal, and, and then once I have a response, we'll put it on the agenda for you guys.
Is everyone in agreement?
Sounds great.
Sounds great.
Okay, awesome. Okay, so the last item before we go to open forum is the fees and charges bylaw. So we received a request from administration to review this, and I believe we said in the past that we would be reviewing this annually to make sure it's still serving us the way it needs to, so I guess we're just wanting to make sure that we're all in agreement, that we want to review this bylaw.
Maybe semi-annually because of all the bylaws we've had as of late.
That sounds like admin has some recommendations for things that need to be updated.
I think it's import- I think it's important to review because of the cost of everything changing, the way that things are going, so like we created this for is for annual review. There's also a couple new bylaws that'll be coming into effect that might be needed to add it to this, so I think that's, I think it's pertinent that we do so.
Yeah, I a hundred percent agree.
I agree as well.
So, so we're in agreement that we want to review it, so this'll come back when with
We'll come back to the February twentieth meeting for first reading, and then, then the proposed changes will be available for council to look at and discuss on the March committee of the whole meeting.
Okay, great. Okay, so that's it for our agenda items, well, so we have council open forum, next. Counselor Slager?
Nothing for me at this point.
Okay, Mayor Urban, or Dale, or Counselor Burdas, sorry.
I got nothing, thanks.
Okay. Counselor Paquette?
No, everything I needed to ask, I already asked, thank you.
Thank you, and I also do not have anything tonight, so, thank you. So we'll move along to gallery open forum. Yeah, so let's do the in-person folks first, so we have Mary, hi, welcome.
I have concerns about the feeding of wild bird bylaw. In the area of where it says that any bird seed is spilled, it must be picked up. For one thing, there's a lot of birds, songbirds that, that come to my yard, and they will only feed off the ground. So if you're requiring that this bird feed all be picked up, that will mean that the redpolls don't get fed, the junkos don't get fed, and the pine grosebees don't get fed from, from my yard. I don't know what birds, what other birds, other people have, but those ones will go hungry, because they do not like to be eaten.
Okay, thank you for that.
Also, if I could make a comment, I have seen foxes in my yard, and they will come in and they'll sniff at the bird seed, and then along their way, they do not eat it, and no other animals, my knowledge, except for red sprouts.
Okay.
Eat, eat the bird food.
All right, well, thank you for that. Anyone else in the room that wants to make a comment? Peter?
Peter Carson.
Peter Carson?
Usually five minutes, your worship.
Five minutes?
Okay.
Yeah.
Can you give me a one-minute one, please?
Yes.
Thank you. I, I've read this bylaw submission in front of the back a number of times, and like marrying, house some birds that also feed on the ground. Ravens, for occasion, come in. The, just, just sort of taking a step back from all this, when we talk in the terms of wildlife, right, I kind of find different definitions for it. And it's non-human things, especially wild animals living in their natural environment.
Peter, can I just interrupt for a second, can I get you just to move ahead to a speaker, because they can't hear you?
Oh, yeah.
Good, did the squirrel thing and the bird feeders come through?
Want to just start again?
Okay. Okay, like Mary, I.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Okay.
Like Mary, I also feed small birds and I've spent considerable money to. Uh, buy bird feeders that have got the tops that don't lift easily even if they're tipped. But unfortunately, the gates where the feed comes out, when the squirrels jump onto it, it sprays. It does spray some, some uh seed on the ground. And uh, on occasion, I'll get a raven or two that comes into the yard. That uh pecks away at that. I don't know what they get out of it. It looks like they eat the whole seed, but nevertheless. Anyway, in as far as wildlife, uh, uh, definition that I found uh was non-human things. Uh, uh, especially wild animals living in their natural ha- environment, okay? Well, I think it, you know, domesticated, um, you know, we've got. We've got ravens that are so domesticated that there's nests. Uh, across from Y Lake Manor and there's, and that you can, it's right there, right against the street, and the same thing behind Help and Hope. And uh, they've been using that nest for three years since I've been there. And uh, uh, anyways, and uh. There's, there's not a, you know, there, there, we're just right on Simpson, so it's just a. Matter of uh yards to get to Campbell Highway. And you would think if they wanted, if they were truly wild animals, they wouldn't want to be around. The noise and din of human activity and so on. But uh, if depending on who you talk to in native folklore, uh, they've been interacting with ravens for. At least a thousand years, maybe longer, depending who you talk with. Uh, the second uh, uh, possibly two to three hundred years ago, settlers came in. And hundred and fifty years ago, roughly, gold rush. And this just brought more and more interaction with these birds, and they're highly intelligent. They're alleged to be like seven-year-old children, but. Um, I don't know of any seven-year-olds that know three hundred sentences, much less how to speak, you know, uh. And in one to two years, uh, to that extent. So, and they're, they're touted as the most intelligent of the bird species, so I'll leave it at that. And uh, anyway, the uh, and crows are similarly intelligent, but uh, you know, the ravens can actually be uh. If they spend enough time with people, they can learn to talk. Anyway, the uh, uh, for approximately ninety years since World War Two and. The Alaska Highway being built, that's when it really started to pick up for the interaction, I'm sure, with the ravens and domesti- domestication. Really uh, started to take a uh much faster spin. And allegedly, the town of Watson Lake at one time was servicing roughly fifty-five thousand people from here. At various mines and other, and other industries that are in the, in the region. And um, again, more interaction with birds and, you know, it's, it's uh. Uh, more people that find enjoyment in them and so on like this. Anyways, um. Uh, and uh, uh, the, the definition didn't say. Um, um. Uh, oh, a de- um, domesticated, nested in trees. Um, okay, while they adapted over time from a wild or natural state. To live in close association with and to the benefit of humans. And it doesn't define what the benefit is. I, I penciled in enjoyment and uh. Uh, the, they're playful and uh, they'll come and eat out of your hand. And uh.
And that, Peter.
Okay, uh, anyways, the getting, getting on uh to the point. Um, I can appreciate that there are, there are people who, who truly don't like. Birds of uh many different natures and descriptions. However, with uh, uh, my next-door neighbor Button. Um, it was really li- literally within a matter of a couple of weeks of us moving in. In September the third of two thousand twenty-one. That uh, uh, she came over and she was lauding me for beating the ravens. And she, she referred to them quote-unquote, "my beautiful ravens" and went on for about fifteen minutes with a story about how. There was a breeding pair that nested in her backyard. She fed them every day. The rooks grew up, she fed them. This went on for s- for a number of years, and even lives over at the, at the conservation office. She was. She was talking about it as well in a conversation that was between her, uh, between Mark Bryant and myself. She interjected this at a, at a point. And uh, so it seems to me that this, this whole fluff and puff and everything else is being largely overblown. And especially in uh, I don't know if this has gone on the record, but. In a Facebook forum where this was being floated out to get uh, uh, you know, people whipped up about it. Um, Dino's wife, if you know Dino, who lives just to the south of us. Uh, we share a fence and uh, his wife Erin, I guess former wife now, I think she's in Fort Nelson or. Uh, anyway, she posted uh, a statement which really was uh. Quite a shocking thing to be told uh by numerous people. Um, that uh, that she was recommending that Button poison them, okay? And I believe I witnessed exactly that happening, okay? There was a, a group of uh family that uh nested across from Help and Hope, and I'll cut it off.
Okay.
But uh, anyways, the male started going over to her backyard. The female and one of the rooks joined them. Uh, the male soon disappeared like two, three days later, never to be seen again. Same thing happened with the female, same thing with the rook, uh, I believe the male. That left a female, and she was actually trained how to feed by, by mingling with crows. Which was, I was, I never would have imagined that. But uh, anyways, I included in my, my return correspondence, and this would be thirty seconds worth.
Mm-hmm.
A suggestion that there may be a way to accommodate both people like Button and as well people that want to share and enjoy the, the bird. Because uh, like, is tax gonna be responsible for five thousand dollar fines because of the, the number of. Uh, ravens that sit there waiting for people to throw a french fry or whatever? What about the truck drivers? Are we gonna find them? Because if that starts up, I don't think they're gonna be too happy about bringing food here. Fuel, everything, any, any of the hard goods, anything. And uh, uh, I suggested a, uh, some type of a reserve, a sanctuary where people like myself. You know, maybe crazy as it seems, I would, I would drive out to beyond Lucky Lake, which is outside the township of Lake. And uh, and enjoy them there. And I truly think that with uh, with time and a, a small amount of investment. Um, doesn't really require much, clearing some land and uh. Uh, not much clearing, but uh, you know, taking the brush out and things like that. Um, that uh, it could be a tourist attraction which would bring people here to see this phenomenon, is like in Vancouver. Uh, by, by more seconds.
Okay.
Several million crows that migrate uh over top of the city every night and they go back in the morning. Uh, to all corners of, of uh Vancouver, Burnaby, New West, Richmond, all over the place. And uh, there's been some famous crows, uh, one that has a red thing on tie wrap on his foot. That some kid killed, which was terrible. But uh, the, the numbers of people that I met there uh while I was feeding crows. I mean, it was just incredible. I, I, it was one of the most enjoyable periods of my life. Where I would, I would uh have like little children, you know, three, four years old, and I'd give them some dog food and they toss it out and the ravens. They could see that the kids were harmless. They'd come right up to these kids and, and knock quite eat out of their hand, but.
Mm-hmm.
They'd have one that used to fly and land on my head, so.
Okay.
Anyway, I'll leave it at that. I think that there's some, some, some other probable, probably a few other ideas that.
Okay.
Uh, given some time, people could think through it. I mean, we could uh have a happy ending after all.
Right, thanks, Peter.
Thank you.
Appreciate you uh coming in.
Well, I'd like to, I, I'd like to be seen as trying to provide solutions, not adding a problem.
Thank you. All right, um, Lois, did you have any, anything for open gallery? Okay, um, and so we'll just roll through the Zoom calls. Sorry, Jordan, did you wanna?
No.
Say anything? Okay, um, we'll just roll through the Zoom uh list really quickly, Blue.
Your worship, don't have to unmute because the uh chat function is not.
Okay, uh, so the chat function is not active right now, so, um, Colleen? You're at the top? You'll have to, oh, you are unmuted. Did we figure? Okay, she's good. Okay, uh, Blues? Any comment?
Okay.
Okay, Button?
No response.
Okay, um, Ted? Okay, great, and Patty? Hello? No comments?
Oh, hello, a li- a little technical difficulty.
Okay.
Um, I, I, the only, I only had one question really, and I was, I was driving around town uh this afternoon. And I saw upon. By the, oh, I don't even know what street it is, is it Highland? Um, where there's red crosses painted in the snow. And I wondered what that was about.
Um, I believe if you could figure it out and let me know, I'd be very happy to know too, cuz I've noticed them around town, so. I don't know if it's um, Atco or Northwest Hill doing something, but it's one of the utilities that have been. Marking locations around town.
Oh, okay.
Uh, one of the.
Thank you.
One of the uh Atco trucks uh driven by Jordan was. Uh, driving around where, where we live on Simpson and we got into a conversation. And what he was doing was, uh, I think trying to make a map of where all the transformers are. And there's, because it was powered out a few weeks ago.
Oh, yeah.
They had a crew that came in from White Horse that was just in here filling for people away from here. And they had, they had a little struggle to find this transformer that somebody had smashed into with a vehicle. And um, I kind of pointed him in the direction. He had seen it and he said, yeah, it's still looking pretty rowdy because the cover up and stuff. But that may be.
Yeah.
Explanation there.
Awesome, thanks, Peter. Okay, so uh, that concludes our gallery open forum, um.
There is in camera.
Okay, great, so we will need a motion to go.
I'll make a motion to go in camera.
Thank you very much, and at this point, we will have to ask the gallery to excuse us, please. Thank you all for coming out.
Yeah, okay. Uh, either way, I apologize. I got you confused at five.
A second there.
I didn't plug in camera, should I?
It's over on uh round Simpson Drive, please go through your.
Yeah, that's my jacket, sorry, thanks.
Good night.
I'll probably take it out of the, help, do you go, is it on, do you go down the stick?
Oh, yeah.
It's not really a presentation, I was gonna flag up the.
Oh, yeah.
Cuz um, unless you email it to me.
It's on the.
Oh, shit. Because the minute I, uh, the minute I.
I can help you, I can just talk.
Kind of rookie bullshit.
You know what? Think so, we're talking about, uh, we're talking about the app stuff. Um.
I can stay, it's up to you, doesn't matter.
So. So, Nate, Jordan was here tonight to talk about uh housing accelerator programs. For fun and the fact that um, the reason we're in camera is because the fact that the feds still haven't announced it, so we have to talk in camera. So Jordan's gonna talk about um, what we're, what we're looking at, what we wanna do, wants to get some feedback from council. And then the second thing that's on the agenda is Jordan's contract, which I gave you guys an admin report, I think that laid it all out, so. Um, that motion, um, I, I just need the okay from council to go ahead, and then once. The announcement's been made, then we'll make it uh official on a regular meeting.
What do we think that's gonna happen?
I don't know. She, she was, uh, the last email from uh. Cleo, I think, read part of that email this week, and she's hoping that it's very, very soon, but it hasn't happened yet, so.
Are we sure we actually, we sure we actually getting the money?
It's signed.
Oh, yeah.
It's signed, it's ours.
Okay.
And, and I just got the recreation report, so I'll send it.
Oh, that's.
Um, yeah, so anyways, uh, I will let, I will, I'm just gonna look for that email from Cleo to see what she says about dates. Um, oh, yeah, reading from the north with nothing more on it.
Not that it matters, but I just feel like things always take so long, and then they're like, oh, surprise, you also only have two weeks to use it.
Well, they were like. Really trying to hurry us along.
Yeah.
Signed and then bidding for like a month or more.
Yeah.
Um. Got it signed before New Year's.
You know, they're, they're already wanting to, they already want to have a, in a few weeks, they want to set up our first quarterly meeting. Well, holy shit. Um, dangerous. Um, so anyways, that's. Unfortunately, we don't know the date yet, so, okay, Jordan, take us away.
Um, hey, guys, I'm just happy to be here finally. Sorry, a couple of false starts on the. Uh, due to weather on the trip, apologize for that. Um, but yeah, grateful to be here today. I think. Um, if I, I, I guess I was gonna flash this up on screen, but there's some technical uh things limiting that, but. Basically, what I wanna do with you guys tonight, is I wanna take you through the application we did. Cuz I don't even know if you guys really even know what's in it. Um, we could talk about what we submitted. Um, I wanna talk about timelines. Um, I, I think we're gonna be under a lot of pressure to spend this money, get this program done. Um, and so. Talk about, I guess, like what council feels needs to come underneath to support these processes. And I have some suggestions there, um, and this is really like, not to get into too much of a wormhole, and if we do, maybe we'll set up a different session. But talk through these programs and, and, and see what the initial thoughts are, so I can get some initial direction. Um, I think, just like Cam says, everything needs to be above board, so this all need, need to come to council when it's public for. Approval, whether it's policies, bylaws, like whatever, whatever, so, um. I guess like the nice thing is we can start doing this work quite great now, and I have been, so. Um, does that sound good, everybody? Makes sense?
It's good to me.
Yeah.
Yeah, sounds great.
Sounds great.
Okay, cool. Um, so we submitted five initiatives, um. For the, basically, like, you guys got two point two million dollars, which is like tons of money. Um, we submitted five initiatives in order to get that money. I'll go through each of these in detail, but I'm just gonna list them right now. Um, number one is a grant program to build infill dwelling units. That is basically a grant program to build housing. Uh, you'll hear different language, it's just we need to use their language, so I'll explain all of it. Um, number two is an incentive program to convert non-residential units to residential units. Um, number three is amending the zoning bylaw, um, to encourage different. I, I worded it differently, but to encourage different forms and types of house.